If you need it, you can plug in the list.
This is, look at the power.
All speaking in order, those in attendance, please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katie, can you turn the sound system off? Please. Can I say something before you start? No, the meeting started, bud. Can I say something? No, Jack, the meeting started. Wait until public comment, bud. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us for this regularly scheduled June 5th, 2023 council meeting. As you come in tonight, if you are a guest or a visitor with us, which would be to my right, which would be to everybody else's left, there's a desk through those double doors, there's a sign-in sheet on that desk, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Morrissey?
Here.
Caladino?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Sherr?
Here.
Soha?
Present.
Stuccio?
Here.
Veer?
Here.
Wolfram? And Mayor Sofford?
Here.
One man, sir.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of agenda items. City manager or any members of council have any changes to make to the agenda tonight? See you tonight. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sound low. Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Veer to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your attempts to one to the podium. And please, uh, remember that during this particular public comment period, that whatever you speak on needs to have a direct tie to something present on the agenda tonight. Podium's now open.
Ted Jansen, 104 Hillsdale Street. Um, you have a letter before you about possible location for... Ted Jansen, 104 Hillsdale Street, you have a letter before you about a possible location for, uh, homeless, a camp on city property. I suggest you firmly give it some serious thought, keep yourself out of potential devastating litigation on this, uh, no camping ordinance. We don't mind following the way of Martin Weiss, who ended up with almost a million dollars in legal fees between the plane that didn't say. But you can do it the Hillsdale way, or you can do it the right way, it's your choice. Uh, the mayor has concern about the task force and what happened to it. I think the mayor needs to, uh, look at the lack of leadership, his own, and the appointments, choices he's made of... With grading, moves on to public safety committee to start with. And their prime task was to basically drive a homeless out of City Hillsdale. And the appointments he made to the homeless committee, which were primarily a substantial part of Hillsdale College people. And his endorsement of Mr. Lipicott, where in his own public rights, viewed the homeless as worthless bums and zombie drugies. That's hardly what you want, type of person you want on your homeless committee. But be that as may, as the Public Safety Committee basically cut the legs off from under the homeless committee, under Stephanie Myers and her group. Let's go forward with the intake camping ordinance before the homeless committee had their, all their ducks in a row. It's shameful. It's shameful that everyone did such a thing. But then again, this is Hillsdale. And you wonder why half the people on the homeless committee, those who were truly committed to doing something, just quit out of disgust. Which left a great portion of the homeless committee, those who are still at Hillsdale College. And their best bet was to not show up for meetings. No forum, no committee. And as you see with the last two homeless committees, there was none. Because the home, because Hillsdale College people didn't show up. And now you said, well, let's see what's wrong and try to start again. I don't think, you know, you had opportunity of putting people on that committee faster. Prince. He worked with Hallmark for ten years in Kansas City, feeding the homeless. You had Jeff Cooley, who worked with the homeless. You have Dennis Wayne Scott, who asked to be on the committee. I guess maybe he fit the mayor's profile. So therefore, we'll just have this committee that, uh, is more or less governed by Hillsdale College people. And we know what the result was. My neighbor, Lisa Schleter, put her on the committee and she was responsible to create a current for a better Hillsdale. And she really rallied the troops, had a hundred and nine responses, what's wrong with the homeless? And she was here, and a whole bunch of others, a couple weeks ago, a month ago. Let's, you know, get this anti-camping ordinance passed, let's get rid of these people. And then you wonder why, Mayor, why the homeless committee did not succeed, why people have quit, give up in disgust, feeling betrayed. That's why.
Thanks, Ted. Any more public comment?
Uh, Steve Hammond, I beg the council's indulgence to be able to address the council from here.
Go ahead, Steve.
I have been a volunteer at the Warming Center for the Homeless for the past five years. It's been my privilege, uh, as in many, uh, volunteer, uh, situations, I've received a lot more than I've given. I can tell you by far, the people that we serve, first of all, are people. They all have stories, and I can tell you that a lot of us are not that far away from walking in their shoes. And, uh, you know, however you stand on the issue, uh, passing an ordinance, you know, not allowing camping, whatever, you're still going to have the homeless with you. As the Bible says, the poor you always have with you, well, I think there's an unwritten corollary to that, the homeless you always have with you. And societies and indeed cities are judged by how they take care of the least among them. So, I urge the council, going forward, to take the issue seriously, to view it compassionately. Uh, if they're going to have a homeless task force, let it be a real one. Let it be one with people that know something about the issue. And, uh, let the, let the council, uh, take the deliberations of that committee under serious advisement. And let's move forward as a compassionate city, not a foolish city. But a compassionate city that balances reason and compassion in addressing a very real issue that is not going away anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any more public comment?
Hello, I'm Angela Turner, 1049 Union Street in Warburg. Um, I just want to thank you all for the time you put forth in giving the event on the city ordinance for no camping. Um, I believe it was nice that you listened and took some consideration of what you said. Um, I'm speaking tonight to ask for one more consideration on amending that. Um, I saw that you amended from a misdemeanor, just a little correction was pleased with that. But just wondering if there's an option to consider taking the fine from less than a hundred to five hundred to being, um, no more than five hundred dollars and to offer community service a lieu option. I believe this would allow people the flexibility and financial circumstances to be able to be in compliance of that ordinance. While also empowering them to be of service to our community, which will benefit both the community and the individuals. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks for considering.
Thank you, Angela.
Hi, I'm Missy Dash, starting in Hillsdale Community Thrift. Um, I too would like to recommend that you all look at how it's, how it's worded at the end. I, I, I know ultimately it is up to the judge, but I think that we should mimic that as much as possible. Um, I know there's civil infraction for most ordinance violations in the city. I mean, I've received one for having my leaves too close to the road, and, um, it was twenty-five dollars. And so, if, if a civil infraction for an ordinance violation is only twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars, and we have it written that it's a hundred to five hundred, if the judge is only pretty much going to be in that vicinity of the twenty-five to fifty, I think that we should mimic that. Um, and also, a lot of these people, I can assure you firsthand, don't even have five dollars to their name, let alone have to worry about a hundred dollar bill that they would have to pay at a courthouse that if they didn't pay, then it would become a warrant for their, for their arrest. And so, I think in working with that, even community service would get them at least some sort of services and recognition that they would need, that would help them get into the services that they would need, or they would be introduced to other people, or somebody would be willing to help them. Um, so I too, I think that that should be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Uh, Dennis Wayne Scott, I have to agree with her on that, that, you know, these people are, do not have the finances. I know I, I work with people that, uh, they're, I'm their payee, and some of these people do not have the money to pay the fines. So what's going to happen is, as she would say, they would, he should have been for it, have them arrested, throw them in jail. Now, now it's coming back to us, the taxpayers, to start paying for their, their fines or paying for their upkeep while they're in there getting two or three meals a day. You know, and, you know, sometimes we have to look at things, you know, as some are starting to say, uh, the Bible says that when you've done it unto the least of these, you've done it unto me. And they turn around and ask him, says, "Well, where have we ever done it to you, Lord?" And he says, "When you haven't fed the hungry, or, or you go about not helping those that are down and out." You know, these are the things that, that we have to look at. And when we go forth from tonight and forward, are, are we really doing what is just and honest and right? Not because of, uh, the Pharisees or the, the elitists saying we have to do this, but because we're doing it because, uh, you know, we want to not only help our community, but to help those people. And we need to help the people by showing them a better way, finding a way for them. Maybe they don't need to be homeless anymore. I mean, you, you see the old factory over there in Jo- Jonaville that's completely empty. You know, that would be fantastic. I know it's not yours, not Hillsdale. But, you know, in places like that, there's someplace out there for these people, or they wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Uh, Robert Rikers, City of Towne, Chip, and I'm glad this is being addressed. Uh, I have a couple rentals, and I am falling into a pitfall because the courts themselves have ultimately changed a new paperwork in which says you have to qualify in order for you to be able to handle any eviction, bring an eviction, you know, to their, to the courts. But in addition, I've been sitting on one person that has been there, what, going on five months without a pay, and it's been extended and extended. So, you know, what do you do? Now, do I end up turning my property over? I'll let it go on back, what do you, I want to call it foreclosure. Why not? Why not become homeless? I've been invited to kind of camp out as a homeless, just to find out how it's for them. I want to find out just how bad it really is, and now we're finding out. It's even worse when you can't get somebody evicted out of your own home, or your places that you have for rent. Are we going to come into complications with everyone, starting to lose our properties? But I can't see somebody... Some of the people, in fact, down on Brown Road, down on US 12, one camped out on the fine, they were there for about a month and a half, uh, they finally, uh, moved. But we got one down on Jeffrey's Road, they were camp, little camper sitting in the woods there, they moved. But it took almost, uh, what, five months? How do we get them out? But it's coming back to us. We need to find a way, a solution, not something that we can just hand over in ordinance. Got to find a solution. Something has got to come forward. And I hope that all of you will, you know, come to something good. But thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any more public comment? Agenda items?
Hi, my name's Leisha Taylor, Ward 4. Um, I just wanted to, I've, I've been working with homeless now for the last year. Um, a lot of us are one step away from being in their position. Um, all the ones that I've helped or worked with or got to know do so much work around the city to make this place nicer. I see them down at the park, cleaning up trash from other people. Just yesterday, there was one outside doing the flowers out front of City Hall. Um, they're humans. You know, they fell on hard times, most of them. They lack the means or the resources to get the help they need. And I just want you guys all to remember that, that these are people in our community, and we need to find a way to help them, not criminalize them. Thank you.
Thank you, Leisha.
And I'm Ward 4. I would just like to see the task force have an opportunity to do their job before we start enacting ordinances. You kind of neutered them by jumping the gun and not letting them have a chance to do anything. Um, it doesn't seem to make sense. And we have a county commissioner that actually resigned from the task force because people aren't showing up. Thirteen seems like a large amount to try and get people to a meeting and have a forum. I think that's the number that was on there. I'd love to see the people that came and didn't come, so we can have an idea. From what I've been reading, it was a good portion of the college people, like Mr. Lipicott and some of the others that didn't show. You would think if somebody wants to be on committee, like Ted said, I know Pastor Prince really wanted to be on committee and he was never reached out to. He's actually been homeless. He's worked with the homeless. He's a very caring, loving gentleman that wants to figure out how to help these people and not criminalize them. Think he would have been a great person on the task force. As other people have said, these people don't have money for these fines. It's not going to do anything. It's big government, a knee-jerk reaction, a feel-good reaction, that's not going to do anything. They're, you're going to give them a fine, they're not going to build a pad, and they're going to go to jail, so it's criminalizing them anyways. You take the criminal element out, but it's ultimately going to criminalize them. So, it's just a waste. It's big government, and I'm against big government. Thank you.
Thanks, Penny. Any more public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to do, sorry, I'd like to do a quick agenda to my comment, and that is...
No, uh, the rules are, one trip to the podium.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, Steve.
Good evening, I'm Ginger Novak, I live in Ward 4. Um, before I, uh, came today, I, I downloaded the packet and I, I saw Mr. Jansen's letter. And, um, well, I really commend him for staying in this and trying to find an answer, and also for his great computer skills for adding the satellite picture to his letter, which is beyond me. Um, I, I have to use his own reasoning against him to, um, against the idea of designating a legal space for the homeless in Hillsdale. Um, the quote from his, uh, letter, "The site I propose is out of sight of the general public and in an area where there would not possibly be an issue with noise. As Jesus has stated, the poor will always be with you. Homeless individuals will always be with us, so why not provide a legal space for them to temporarily live while various social services can assist them to get back on their feet and become productive citizens." I have several conflicts with this. First, out of sight, uh, leads to out of mind. Um, we have to respect these people as human beings, not something we want to get out of our sight. Um, if they're out of our sight, nobody's going to offer them a job, or, um, as, as a lady who might also don't know suggested some community service, which I think is a great idea. If we can put a dollar value on their community service so that they can either find that way, what a great idea. Um, the problem, the difference between the homeless and the rest of us is choices. And we have to admit, as I'm sure they would, they have at least temporarily really messed up their lives with choices they shouldn't have made. Um, Mr. Jansen also quotes our Lord Jesus, but he overlooks the fact that the Bible also says, "If a man will not eat, will not work, he shall not eat." And, um, that's, that is pure renegate. We are hardwired to understand that we do something in order to get something that we want. Um, also trapped in the unseen, unheard corner of the public services dump site, these people will become refuse to us. We will not think of them any other way. And if they are seen, before we turn them out that way, they can be allowed to choose a better life. They can be offered work, community service that has a price tag. Um, they will receive, at the very least, something they get put on a resume when they go looking for a job, which I hope every one of them does. And the third thing is that whenever any municipality designates an area for the homeless, other municipalities jump on this, and they immediately send their homeless that they don't know what to do with to our designated area. It grows exponentially, and then we've got a problem much larger than the one we're dealing with now. The one we're dealing with now is causing so much city council time, law enforcement time, and time among the, the rest of the taxpayers in the city. So, um, thank you so much for listening this evening.
Thank you, Ginger. Any more public comment? And Steve, I wanted to mention to you, there is another opportunity to have public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So if there was things you wanted to add, then there will be another opportunity to speak.
Hello, CJ H. Montcrae, Ward 3. Um, I just keep going back to the, is it the city council's job to focus either on the homeless or not on the homeless? I thought that was the churches and all of the other programs that are meant to help the situation. Um, when I read over what the ordinance states, it doesn't state homeless, it says, it states camping. Um, if that is who is camping, then they're affected, but that's not who it's focused on, it's overall public area. And so my question to the council is, what exactly is your job? To fix every social issue in, in town, or is it to run the city? So, isn't that what all of these other companies or social services are for, to solve that problem, not the council? So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, CJ. Any more public comment? Okay, we'll close the podium, and we'll go into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city of VPU claims of May 11, payroll of May 11, city council minutes of May 15, finance minutes of May 15, Public Safety Committee minutes of May 23. Big Truck Day event closure of South Live Very Locked. Hillsdale County Community Foundation's 5K, that's exciting. Financial reports for the quarter ending 3/31/2023. St. Anthony's Church, uh, park use agreement, and then a traffic control order to close Maury Street. Is there any discussion on any of these items in the consent agenda? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. Just over Maury Street closure, that is, we're addressing something that already happened, I read that perfectly. So, I thought it said June 1st.
No, you, you were, uh, you were correct.
Is that a typo, or is...
No, it's not. Sometimes we approve...
That's fine, okay. Just go ahead, Ford.
Okay. No worries. Any more discussion on any items in the consent agenda? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sound low.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Can I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Yes. Councilman Caladino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Sherr?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Mayor Sofford?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
These are approved.
Thank you, Katie. Uh, we will move on to communications petitions. Uh, the first one is 2023 summer code enforcement leans, and, uh, the assessment rule is in here as well. I don't see Kim here tonight. Is there anything you want to add to this, Dave? It's in the packet?
Correct, that's just, uh, make it public to the council.
Okay. Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if there would be a way for that to be used, if that would be appropriate, just, uh, would we publish that type of information?
I believe it's public information, so I don't think we could legally do that, Tom.
Talking about tax-related information?
Code enforcement leans.
Yeah, that's all a matter of public record.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay. All right, item letter B is another letter from Comcast. Ooh. Item letter C is...
The fact that's out.
They have it. So much information. Uh, item C is the 2021 through, uh, July 2021 through 2022 annual library report, so this is interesting. Hope everybody had a chance to read this. Item D is a letter from Mr. Jansen, uh, as you can tell from his public comment, uh, which he covered most of this, he's talking about using that, um, space over by the dump site for an encampment, homeless encampment. Uh, lighter, letter, item letter E, letter requesting state of emergency. This is just what we voted on last week, or last council meeting, and Dave signed it and included it in the packet. Dave, any update on that information?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we should be hearing it sometime later this week, hopefully from the governor's office in regards to whether, um, the state of emergency was declared. Um, I, we did do some analysis on, on this and presenting our information to the governor's office and the State Patrol, and it, and it was about, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that storm recovery cost between the VPU and DPS. Uh, DPS alone was about a hundred and fifty thousand, a tree and brush removal, um, and, uh, uh, almost three hundred and fifty thousand for the VPU. So, we're hoping that that is approved this week and we can move forward with it. What we should know, I think it's important to mention that, um, after the council approved it, I went to the county commission where it was approved, um, we submitted that information to the state, or through our emergency manager. And, um, Senate State Senator Bellino also submitted... our emergency manager, and State Senator Bellino also submitted a letter of support directly to the governor's office on our behalf, so hopefully we will have that provision.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Councilman Cherry?
Yeah. We want to make sure the public understands that $350,000, some of that's for all those monitoring crews that we brought in from other communities to help us and putting them up in motels and feeding them. So, that's where that money went. And you can remember how bad that ice storm was for everybody, so that figure is about right and correct, and it hurt our budget, it dug into our budget pretty good, so that's why I think it's a good idea what you're doing here. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll move on. And then item, letter F in communications petition is a letter of resignation from the homeless task force from Mr. Benzine, Commissioner Benzine. And I will cover this when we have our homeless task force committee discussion and old business, item A. But Brad went to every meeting and then resigned out of frustration after this last meeting, so it is something that I want to talk about. Any discussion on any of these items? Okay, we will close communications petitions, and we will move into introduction and adoption of ordinances. Item letter A, amended no camping ordinance. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. During the last council meeting, we brought forth the ordinance to forbid camping on public properties within the city of Hillsdale. There was some suggestions about changing the, from misdemeanor to a civil infraction, so we don't criminalize people that might be doing that or give them a record. And it was sent back to the public safety committee meeting, which we made those changes with the expectation of support. I would like to point out that this ordinance is targeting camping on public property, not the specific or particular people. And it is done and designed in effect to maintain the safety and integrity of our public spaces. I do like the idea, and am willing to consider and appreciate council discussion on the community service and movement, and I would appreciate your take on this if that's even possible, Tom.
It is not. So, if it's municipal civil infraction, under the state municipal civil infraction statute, the court does not have the authority to order someone to participate in community service, even as an alternative type of penalty. So, the court can find costs, there are assessments that they assess, but that, that's pretty much what they're limited to, along with they can award damages if it's a type of action or if you have used damage on someone's personal damage. And the court can also award some costs and some other things, and, for example, like in our, our ability code type of enforcement actions requiring somebody to own a property and allow this. But short of that, that's the only options that the court has. And one of the reasons for that, we'll get to my second part of it, which is, if you're going to have a program for community service, you have to have a way to verify that people are actually completing community service with legitimate organizations that you want to have them complete that type of service. So, the court's not going to undertake that, most likely. And in the alternative, we could do it as some sort of deferral program that we have when we have the citations, meaning that instead of having them with the responsibility, we can work out some sort of arrangement with them that if they x amount of community service within a certain period of time, we'll dismiss the citation. The problem with that is, again, if there's some system set up to, one, verify that they're signed up to do it with organizations that might be identified as appropriate for that, and two, then follow up to make sure that they've done it. City Attorney's Office is a resource for that, which means it's generally our alternative to, yeah, police department or city administration to do it, which again, creates another level of bureaucracy that has to track and all that. So, that's, that's the way. If you can't have it as part of the ordinance, you could have it as an informals with the program, once you have that infrastructure, basically you can track it.
What if we limited it to a community service done within the confines of the city? Such as, for instance, these gentlemen that went out and planted flowers and weeded around city hall, I gave them some money out of my pocket, I know Councilman Morrissey did as well, I know Councilman Wolfram did as well. What if it was confined to service, in the service of the city of Hillsdale? So, assisting with leaf pickup, or helping Michelle out at the parks pick up trash, or would that be something that, I don't, I don't see how it would be adding another layer of bureaucracy to do that if we've already got kind of public services workers out doing this, or, just a thought? Yes?
Might, in addition to that, are we to risk insurance standpoint if somebody feels bad and get hurt? How do we cover liability wise? The questions, the type of thing, the questions?
Maybe, yes, depends the manner in which you do it, because we, we could only do it as something that, not that the court would order them to do, but as an offer we would make so that they would not end up with an admission of responsibility. So, it'd be like if you got a traffic ticket and you came in and we said, you know what? If you complete 20 hours of going to pick up trash for the city, we'll dismiss the traffic ticket, assuming you do that in the next 30 days or 16 years from now. So, this would be basically the same thing then. If you completed that type of service, the city attorney's office will agree, I'm going to have the city to dismiss the citation, but you have to do whatever it is that we tell them you would need to do, and it would be their decision whether or not they would take us up on that. Again, you just have, you have to have somebody at the city who would track and make sure that they didn't what they were supposed to do. And again, you couldn't impose it on anybody, it would just be an offer.
Thanks, Tom. Any more questions, Councilman Stuccio?
Who makes the offer?
I would. So, it's typically what we would do, say you got a ticket for, you know, your, your shingles were falling off the roof on your house, right? And we might say, it's not exactly the same thing, but we would say, look, if you get your shingles fixed in the next 30 days, we dismiss the citation, you won't have any bucks or five bucks. So, it'd be similar to that.
So, that's something that we could, even if the ordinance passed tonight without that, that's something that we could explore, because obviously, we wouldn't be able to, like, add it in tonight, probably be confusing to everybody. Is that something?
You can't add it into the ordinance.
Okay.
In illegal ordinance, you can do that. We can inform, we have a program where we offer that to people, because that's what the city wants us to do.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's kind of what I was asking, that if the ordinance passed as is tonight, then this, that's an idea that we could look at moving forward, not as a part of the ordinance, but like you said, as a diversion point to try to make the best of the situation for everyone.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, I appreciate that.
Councilman Bellalee?
Once the city has issue defined, does the city have in place a threshold, either in time or in dollar amount before the city could seek an enforcement on an unpaid fine? So, fines were issued by the court, the court issued a fine, and they actually live with a good judgment, so we're trying to look at fines, the person responsible, because they lived in a responsibility, because they gave me a period, in which case the ball could, you know, or because there was a hearing, and they thought they were responsible for the citation. So, the fine and the costs and the statutory assessments will be issued by the court. Whether or not somebody pays, you know, penalty, they will prove failing to pay is determined by the court. So, for example, if I get assessed $100, the cost is $25, and assessed $5, I'm going to pay $130 to the court, and then I fail to do it within the time limit, which they give me. I can do a couple of things. One of them is I can request the court to allow me to pay the stolen stolen space on my income, the court may do that. The court can issue with something, the court will go back to go and do it. Apex Court, which asks, you know, in the case where would they go and show cause, or would require me then to go to the court, explain to the court why I didn't pay. If the court determines, or I can show that the reason I didn't pay it wasn't because I was just intentionally not paying it, and/or that I have, that I made a good thing effort to come up with the money to be able to pay it, I just couldn't do it, the court can basically, like, slide from that, like, work out some alternative time frame in which I can pay. The court can also hold me in contempt, in which case I can get jail until I, in effect, or on time wise, whatever, on funding costs, the statutory limit for that is $30 a day. So, for a day, I could get $30, and if it's assessed a day, $30, and then the consequence costs. My expectation would be, would be fairly limited circumstances where the court would do that, at least that's what I'm saying. Okay, that was going to be my follow-up. Do we have any record of the court issuing a warrant for $100 unpaid civil infraction? Yes. Okay. Yes.
Any more discussion? Councilman Stuccio?
I just want to make a point, this ordinance is about, let's say, when our social group, we have building agencies out there to take care of the state's problems that we have, our issue is that clean, safe parks for all of our spaces, and we are not here to solve the homeless problem. It sounds like the courts have jurisdiction, they can make, you know, common judgment on case-by-case basis, understand all that? The odd rule, public safety is public safety.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Councilman Stuccio, especially coming down to public safety committee. Any more council discussion, Bruce?
This is an ordinance to ban camping, it's not about the homeless. So, let's get this clear. It's not camping on city-owned property. That's all this is. I don't want to hear about the homeless on this, this is not the homeless we're talking about. It's making the city properties safe, and to have a rule in place. I don't want they go after homeless people, they don't have $100 in their pocket. They're like if they've got $5 in their pocket, that's a good day for them. So, I'm concerned at how would you enforcement's going to work on this? But I do not want people just pitch an tent in Cold Springs Park, period. It's a beautiful park, they've done a lot of great work there, and I want to make, it isn't just about homeless, I just, somebody comes in and says, we're going to pitch a tent there, well, there's no order, so you can't do it. They could have done it on owner's park, possibly. I don't know, that's kind of part of a different rule, but they could possibly do that. So, that's what we're dealing with here, it's not the homeless, it's the camping issue. And that's the only reason I, when Robert asked me what I would do, what it'd take me to support this, is to make it a civil infraction, and that's where I would support that. I would go along with that. Because I don't want people camping on city property. This is a beautiful town, and I want to keep it that way. And it isn't just the homeless who can use it, it's other people also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cherry.
Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, basically, the issue is the public property belongs to everyone, you could say. I can't, I'm no one who's entitled to use public property as if it were a private space.
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to do the best I can here. I have a loud voice, but that's, that's the basic thing. You can't use public property as if it's your own private property. I can walk on private public property, occupy space on public property, but I can't just take it for myself and stay any more than I can stay overnight here at city hall, even if right now I'm occupying space.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. What Councilman Morrissey said was, public property is not, is not private property, it shouldn't be treated as such, and that's what this ordinance is about. So, floundered, so that we need an ordinance to tell people that can't camp on our property that defies logic to me, that, obviously, I think most of us are in agreement that we shouldn't allow people to set up and camp in some public spaces, whether that be parks, or sidewalks, or roads, or city halls, the odd. So, any more discussion? And I appreciate you guys going back and, and working on the compromise with everybody with the civil infraction. I think that was wise, and I do wish we could incorporate some community service in it, because I think that's always the best way to do it, but I think that's something we can work on moving forward, so. Any more discussion?
Does the police have a, a patrol route in order for this? I mean, are they driving by Cold Springs every night on Memorial, going through socks?
Most, so most of our ordinances, including code enforcement, they're enforced on complaint basis. So, somebody calls and says, my neighbor's grass is a foot long, or, I see things, you know, I mean, obviously, the police are out and about on patrol, and if they see things that are against one of our ordinances, then they enforce it, but I think most of the time, most of the time, these things are complaint-driven, so, you know, so be like any other ordinance. Any more discussion? Councilman Sola?
I just want to say, I appreciate that Tom has the ability to go to the court and offer, or to go, if somebody offends the ordinance, to go and suggest public service, and I would appreciate support and somebody making a motion.
So, I'll move. So, moved. Motion up the floor, move yourself, seconded by Councilman Stuccio. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a roll call votes, and clerk?
Councilmember Craig?
No.
Sharp?
No.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bear Sackford?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
And Caladino?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, passes.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move on to introduction and adoption of ordinances, and we'll move into old business, item A, homeless task force committee discussion. So, got this letter of resignation from Commissioner Benzine. I'll read it to you guys. This is the third resignation. Melissa Dustard was the first resignation. The second resignation was Becky Spratt, who never came to a single meeting. Brad has come to all meetings. He said, "I want to thank you for the opportunity of serving on the city of Hillsdale's homeless task force, it has been an honor to be a part of this group, appointed by yourself to gather information." Here we go, guys. "Gather information and recommend possible pathways to reducing the population of unhoused individuals living within the borders of our county's largest city. However, it is time for you to resign from the task force. At today's meeting, we were unable to muster a quorum so that we might conduct business as well as move forward with the mission to which we have been appointed. While I understand that the task force is comprised of busy as well as motivated individuals, even after being given a month's notice of today's meeting date, it appears that not all members share the commitment to the task at hand. As my time is likely better offered to those who truly seek solutions to the issue of housing insecurity in our county, as well as the myriad of other issues our county is challenged with, today I tender my resignation from the homeless city, from the Hillsdale City Homeless Task Force. I wish to thank and recognize my fellow task force members who have made their attendance a priority, and who have been attentive in seeking solutions to the problem." That Brad asked specifically that this letter was added to the bracket. So, I contacted, I sent an email out to all homeless task force members, asking them if they think that they can't make the majority of the meetings, to please step down so we can lower the number of people on the task force, so we can make it easier. I don't think there's an easy answer to this solution. Thirteen is a lot of people, I will admit that. There's been quite a few... Um, there's been quite a few people who haven't attended a single meeting. There's been quite a few people who have only attended one of four meetings. Um, and then we've had some that have shown up for two and not the other two, some that have shown up for three, and then a few that have made all four. There's only a few people that have actually come to all four meetings. I understand people are busy. Uh, these task force meetings are happening once a month. Um, as far as the committee being big, uh, I feel like Mr. Jansen kinda caught, kind of, um, touched on that, of all the people that I didn't reach out to and ask to join the task force, um, like that was a criticism. And that, those cases, we would be looking at more members, and we would even be looking at a harder time to make quorum. So I'm not sure what the magic number is, but I feel like it's like five or seven people so we can do quorum between three people or four people. Dennis, I apologize to you. If you wanted to be on the task force, I had no idea. I looked through my emails. I don't have any correspondences from you asking to be on it, so I'm sorry if you felt like I should've reached out to you, but I wasn't aware. Same thing with Mike Prince. Uh, Mike's a friend. I just had coffee with him at my house two days ago. He never mentioned anything about wanting to be on the task force to me. And I am not gonna lie, there are a few people that I asked to serve on the task force. Um, the McKinney Mento, Holly Carpenter, I asked her to serve on the task force, but she came, I come to a meeting a couple of times and talked about the homeless up here. And when I ran into her, I said, would you, would you like to serve on the task force? Would you please? So in most cases, I didn't go out and seek people for the task force. They found out about the task force, and then they reached out to me and said I would like to be. And that's true for almost everybody on the task force. Besides a couple of people, and the couple of people that I asked, it was because they were making public comment here or at debate, and I said, okay, this is what I'm thinking to do. I'm not so sure if it has anything to do with the public safety committees, uh, no camping ordinance, why people aren't showing up. The reason I say that is because this is the second go-around with the task force, and this is the exact same thing that happened last time. People wanted to be on the committee, and I put them on the committee, and then they didn't show up for the meetings. And we held one meeting where everybody showed up, another meeting where, um, where maybe five people showed up, next meeting, three people showed up. No quorum for the last couple of meetings, or the last meeting, and, uh, so we're experiencing the same thing that's happening over again. Really quickly, when we were seeking road, uh, solutions to our road problem, we put together the Fair Committee. You remember this, don't you Dave? And I was appointed to it, as well as a number of people, interested, interested people in the community. And we met a number of times. The point I'm trying to make is it took us years to hash out things with road funding. Did you have some?
I just wanna make a recommendation. I mean, there's a lot of passion on this, all across the board. Rob and I, Josh, have stepped through a couple of meetings and have listened to this a number of times. To me, I would recommend that we create subcommittees, because you could have a subcommittee that goes out to the support groups and asks them what they do, where they offer, collect that information, put it together. You could have another task force that polices our parks and trails, and sees, are we having camping issues or whatnot? Another task force, I mean, could help, uh, help with, with the volunteer groups, you know, let's, let's get some people in this, do some work. So you could have subgroups within this. And, you know, one of the things we heard also was the timeline, the timeline, we didn't have enough time. Well, I know we met, I believe it was in November, talking about the task force.
Yeah.
I think you put it together in January. Well, here we are in June, we've just now passed it, and the longer you wait, the more entrenched this becomes. So I would strongly recommend that the task force, I mean, these are private citizens. They can, they need our direction to, to form groups and do things for the community. They, they can do this right now. Again, that's not our permission, so I would strongly recommend that these subcommittees get formed, and go out and bring, we've got a lot of people who wanna help, that's wonderful. And, and again, just to talk to this ordinance has caused some people to action. I, I just wanna take my hat off to Missy in the, in the tourist store. And what, I mean, she actually moved and stepped up, and she's offered the place. It's clean, it's organized, and went on to get a nice tour. I was very impressed with what the work she was doing, and that's a private individual. That's private money and private individual. We have the Community Action Agency who sits on a boatload of money. I would have a task force, though I'm not gonna ignore it. What are you doing with my tax dollars? I mean, I think those are fair questions that citizens should be asking, not us.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a lot of work they can do without our commission.
Sure, sure. And I, I don't think they're asking for our commission, our permission. The point, uh, what I was trying to get across was that the no, was that there was some speculation that because of the no camping ordinance, people weren't showing up to the Homeless Task Force meeting. And I think that's really unfortunate if that's actually true, because I can tell you from years of being on council that there's a lot of times I don't get my way on things. There's a lot of times I have to compromise. There's a lot of times that things happen up here that are, that truly I feel disgusted by. But I, like, sweat off and I come and I show up for another day, because when you're devoted to public service, that's what you do. You just never get your way all the time. So it's frustrating to me to think that people, uh, would stop just coming to meetings altogether because something happened that they didn't like at one meeting, or two meetings, or whatever. And as far as Community Action Agency goes, we have a representative from Community Action Agency on the task force, and she has, um, she has been a devoted, uh, meeting attendance person, so she's come to all the meetings and...
But that's, what I'm saying is that is where the public money is at. It's not here. It's at Community Action Agency. It's twenty-two point six million dollars in street dollars. I'll tell you what, you take a half a percent of that, you give it to Missy, and get out of the way, we won't have a problem anymore. A half a percent, that comes up to one point one million dollars. And she's doing it on her own money. I mean, their solutions are not solving the problem, and yet that is where a ton of our resources are at. And I think the public needs to understand that. You're knocking on the wrong door here. We're not the door to knock on. It's Community Action Center, and all these other government agencies that were designed and funded to do this work. What are they doing? Ask them. It's your money. That's my strong recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Stichel. Does anybody have anything else to add?
Briefly to add to that, what they're doing that we learned from the first meeting is that they are giving targeted grants to people who are at risk or have recently experienced homelessness. And so they're providing a direct subsidy to prevent a certain number of people from becoming homeless. And as I understand, once they qualify for this, as long as they continue to meet the qualifications, they receive it for the rest of their lives. So these agencies are not acting as public resources, right? They're using transfer payments to pick a, a group of people that get to remain not homeless. But they're not taking those resources, buying a building, whatever it may be, and trying to transition people out of homeless. They're preventing a group of people from being homeless, but it seems to be a fraction of the overall problem. And so it ends up rather than being a, a homeless prevention and rehabilitation program into just another form of welfare that doesn't solve the underlying problem. I wish the money would come here. If we had a fraction of that, I'd be fine taking on some of these homeless issues, but, once again, it's going to government agencies that don't have any oversight. The other, um, thing to add here is one thing we might give the Homeless Task Force is oversight of the community service program, and ended up junction with the city determining. They could perhaps, maybe the city does need a lot of, uh, its own community service, but perhaps they could coordinate with groups in the area. Um, maybe Missy or Penny, um, need help at their, at their businesses, and they could offer some sort of, uh, pay structure, ten dollars an hour, and we could just, you know, that maybe the task force could see what they're doing, and just accept the signature on their word that they completed the work. Um, if that does become a problem, uh, of the city not being able to handle it or to set up a system, that seems like a...
That's very clever.
Might be a decent way to go by.
Yes. It's very clever. I like that. Um, Stephanie? Stephanie's the chair.
So to dispel some of the things we had said here tonight, um, first and foremost, I do just want to address the fact that I think that the members of the task force who are not in attendance are being unfairly characterized. So we kind of have a mixed table, with a group of thirteen people. The intent, some of it, to my dismay, was to have a mixed population, mixed opinions, things like that. We are not looking at one group or another that is not showing up to the meetings. It is a mixed bag. The last meeting, we only had four of us in attendance, and of those four that were in attendance, it was a mixed bag of everyone else that was missing. So it is not necessarily the human services crowd that is not coming. It is not necessarily the college crowd that is not coming. It's just that people aren't coming.
Yes.
Um, to talk about the resignations, obviously, we saw, uh, Mr. Benzinger's resignation. Um, the other resignations, one of which was a, I would say, direct tie to the ordinance. The other listed no reason, and when asked, provided no reason. So we've had three. One is ordinance-related, one is frustration with attendance, and one is, who knows? So first and foremost, I just wanted to clear all of that up. Any questions?
Any questions for Stephanie?
I just have a general question, Sheriff. What was the status of thirteen? What's the number that they require seven for?
Excuse me?
I don't understand how they can do business, even if only four show up, because it's just a task force. It's not official, not even officially sanctioned. And I don't mean just a task force, that was more choice of language.
It is officially sanctioned. It's just task force's temporary. And that's what a task force is, is a temporary committee.
Right, no, so my point is, I mean, we never, we, we voted, and we all agreed that the task force was a good idea, but I don't remember it not being a subcommittee or a...
It isn't, it isn't. We are trying to, and I wanna say we, it's not we, I'm not in the task, I'm not in the task force, but we're trying to operate within the confines of the Open Meetings Act.
That's fair.
So, and actually, by law, we don't really have to, the task force doesn't have to operate within the confines of the Open Meetings Act. It really doesn't have to. But we get a lot of criticism when we don't operate in the confines of the Open Meetings Act, so.
No, that's, that's very fair. Um, I, if I may, Mayor, uh...
Yes, sir.
I just wanna encourage the task force to keep on, and, um, as Counselor Stichel suggested, you know, let's hold the Community Action Agency accountable. And, um, the, we, Counselor Stichel, myself, and Mr. Mackey, were on a, a call with the Community Action Agency, Parent Agency, a few weeks ago. It's a very long afternoon, I don't remember the name of it. And, um, you know, they have a lot of money that they said they would have to move around. They weren't sure if they had the staff being able to be able to address the issues in Hillsdale County. It was very frustrating for me to hear, because it just sounded like they, the lady in charge, and I left my notes on my kitchen table I had, I was gonna bring, I forgot her name. Nevertheless, that she was for an hour telling us reasons why they may not accomplish the mission, instead of giving us encouragement. I hope that the mission can be accomplished. And that's where I hope that the task force would be able to, you know, be some pressure from the community, from these agencies, to actually accomplish your role here in Hillsdale.
Quite frankly, just to comment on agency and nonprofit work and things like that, of that nature, because that is where my career is at. It is the most frustrating part of working in these industries. You oftentimes feel as though your hands are tied, with the best of intentions. And in defense of the agencies that we have had so far that have come and spoken, um, at the task force, whether in a formal setting, because we can actually hold meetings, or, hey, you showed up, so at least talk to people who are here, so they have information, things like that. In defense of those agencies, and in defense of other agencies that are working in our community, they are held incredibly accountable. I'm not sure how many of you guys who have been through a federal audit or things like that, it is an intense amount of scrutiny and pressure when you are looking at those things. So they are held accountable for where their money is going to. What, like I'm saying, is my biggest personal frustration in my career, and I can see moving forward in the task force, but what, also, we have some really tremendously skilled people within Hillsdale County, is finding solutions and finding ways to work around those red tape problems. It's not going to be easy. It never is. And there is a tremendous amount of red tape, and I, not to throw the ball back into your court, but there's a lot of government red tape that comes into it, from people who are making laws and making ordinances and creating the rules that we have to work through, who have never spent time in our shoes, and who have never worked in the field themselves. But yes, the task force continuing, and the task force continuing to look at these solutions and come up with ideas of how we can pull all of this together, may actually, in a community our size, find something that really truly does work, because that's what we're really good at.
Appreciate you sticking up for nonprofits, because that's the world you come from. But you, you work for a nonprofit that has been tremendously successful on, uh, a micro amount of the budget that some of these other nonprofits are working with, so I understand that that's your world, but I s, I, I know where you work, and I know what you guys have accomplished in this community, and, uh, it's hard for me to understand how such a small organization with such a small budget can get so much done, um, unless and then some of these bigger organizations like Lightways, per se, um, team have dropped the ball on things, so. Counselor Solon?
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation, Stephanie. I mean, this is where, where Penny's point about government bureaucracy and things getting over, you know, inflated, and you have to cross all your Ts and dot all your Is, and you can give five hundred dollars to this guy to, to, you know, put not five hundred dollars to that guy, and so there's this perpetual thing going, and this is where, and I always encourage this, this is where philanthropy and your own Christian charity comes into play. And maybe we as a community can get behind, uh, Missy DeJardins', um, work, and we can pull our own resources together and circumnavigate the, these tax haulers that are having to have their Ts crossed and their Is dotted, and not able to do the things. And for an hour, this phone call, it was a video call that we were on, the lady was telling us it was gonna be difficult, and she never said those words, uh, but that it was gonna be difficult for them to get the resources allocated here and the personnel allocated here to accomplish the mission. And, but maybe we as a community, I think, we could as a community, in fact, and, um, I'd just like to see that happen, and, um, so that people can actually, that find themselves in dire straits can actually get connected to the resources and the tools, and we encourage to accept them, because there's been two men that have stood at that podium and said that they refused the help that was offered them, and that's unfortunate, and, um, it shouldn't be applauded or lauded or acceptable, in my opinion. But, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention there.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody, any other question for Stephanie Walsh at that podium? Counselor Shire?
How many's that committee thirteen?
That is the number that we started with.
There's ten now.
Yes.
Well, don't we reduce it down to seven or nine, and that way they can hold a meeting? If there's only four there for seven, that's a quorum. Nine is five.
That's the email that I sent out, asking people to resign if they can't attend the majority of meetings. I understand that people miss some meetings sometimes, but...
But this is, an issue that's been on hot tape for quite a while, and people are gonna step up, and they wanna complain, actions speaks louder, if they actually show up to meetings and take the time, because I know you're taking your time out to do this, and we have a family at home. And this is a very important issue, and we need to get it so where they can have a quorum. If it's just four or five people, that's better than what they're not doing right now. I mean, they feel like they've been slighted a little bit, the homeless committee, they weren't listening to. I mean, they feel like they've been slighting a little bit the homeless committee that weren't listened to. And we gotta make sure they have their meetings, we gotta make sure it happens. It's just like the finance meeting. There's two of us there tonight, if I didn't show up, they couldn't have held a meeting. It's like that, so people, when they make a commitment, they gotta follow up on it. That's the bottom line, follow up on it. If you care about this community, then do what you say you're gonna do. Put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any more questions for Stephanie?
Is there anyone still who hasn't ever attended a meeting on the task force?
There are several.
Are you?
Yeah, there's several.
Are you comfortable with removing them?
If you haven't attended a meeting, yes, if somebody hasn't attended a meeting, then I'm comfortable. But I, I sent out an email on Friday, was hoping for resignations, I've gotten none yet. As a matter of fact, I haven't got a single person that's answered the email at all.
If you don't receive those resignations before the next meeting that they have, it might be good to just pull the trigger on that.
Okay. That sounds fair. Okay. Sure. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we'll move out of old business into new business.
I have one question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
No, I have one question.
You're fine.
So on task force, I wanted to highlight something that was done, and this from a public safety standpoint. But the survey that was done, the survey, you know, there's a high percentage of people that recognize their homelessness or whatever. But the thing that caught my attention was there was a ninety-four point five percent peed survey, and I realize this is not a scientific survey.
Sure.
But they said the nuisance and property violations were not adequately defended by the police department. Now, I'm hoping this is more perception problem, not real problem. But from a public safety standpoint, I think we need to look at this and make sure that the police department is representing and doing what we are asking to do. And if they are, and I'm sure they are, we need to help educate the public on that. And I think part of that, though, with this order is, I've already noticed, I mean, I have noticed a much cleaner place, so I, I kinda wanna have Elizabeth maybe go back and circle back around and just take the survey. Ninety-five percent didn't feel our police was doing an adequate job, that really bothered me, so.
That's a good thing, point on, Councilman Stucho.
That's it.
Any more discussion before we move on to new business? Okay, new business, item A, M.D.O. Arrow Contract Twenty Twenty Three, and it's a resolution. Now, these are all resolutions in state.
Thank you, Mayor. As previous, and as Council is aware, we are working on our new airport terminal that was funded, is primarily funded through the FAA. This resolution actually approves the funding mechanism for that. M.D.O. Contract Twenty Twenty Three dash zero five point four. And what it does is it provides the funding mechanism to pay for the design of the terminal as well as the parking mounted infrastructure. That cost total, total is three hundred nine thousand eight ninety-six. FAA will pay two hundred and sixty thousand of that. Now, keep in mind, this is multiple professional designers involved with this because of what the federal government requires. Here we have a civil engineer, here we have electric engineer, mechanical engineer, we have architects, as well as a state involved. So there's a lot of plans involved in making sure that the project is designed to last. So with that said, the FAA will pick up two hundred and sixty thousand for forty of that cost. M.D.O. A small portion, six thousand eight eighty-one, and then our share is forty-two thousand five sixty-five, this particular contract, which covers all that design. So what we need to do, we're asking the Council to do, is approve the Resolution Three Five Five, improving the contract and authorizing the city management's equipment to enter into the terminal design contract.
Thank you, Dave, any discussion? Councilman Palladino.
How will the city pay for this?
The city, on the airport side, it does have funds saved up for a terminal project within the airport capital improvement portion of the budget.
Will future revenues from the airport cover these costs?
We, the, the airport and their capital budget has saved for this terminal, so they have the money there. But future revenues from the fuel sales will help offset other costs as part of the airport, so yes.
So this is money that the airport has earned on fuel sales?
The majority of it is yes.
Do you know the breakdown there?
Well, we, they've been banking the fuel, I do not know the exact breakdown, but they've been banking fuel sales for the last several years, which has been probably a hundred thousand dollars or so a year. So there is ample funds which covers this.
Really encouraging to see that the airport has gone into being such an economic development tool and making money to support itself, because it wasn't always that way, Dave, if you remember.
No, when we took over or changed the airport structure, they weren't selling fuel or generating any revenue on their own. Just this last month, and Ginger gave me this report today, because of the economic development of coming into the county and the town for various reasons, not just the college. We sold over five thousand gallons of jet fuel just for the month of May, which is a record for us, it just keeps going up. And also seven hundred and twenty-five gallons of regular aviation fuel. So they keep upping their game and generating revenue and making the airport exit this location.
Second, so, any more questions? Councilman Shire.
You know, in the finance committee, they do make a lot of money, the airport. They're bringing in money because when Ray was sitting in your seat, he used to always ask that question at the finance thing, how much did he bring in this month? And it was a good amount, because just check the jets when they're out there. There's been two or three of them, and they buy the fuel there. So it is a money-making process, and they are doing it the correct way. Because for Hillsdale to grow, you've gotta have an airport, that's the bottom line.
I would agree with that, there's no highways coming into Hillsdale, so. Yes. Any more questions, discussion? Councilman Palladino.
Are these funds separated by ordinance or just by, how, how are they kept separate? To know that we're not drawing from the general fund for this?
So in the budget itself, the booklet, which was approved by Council and we were here for the last meeting, and now it's adopted, it is specifically broken out in there of the revenues that come into the account and the revenues or the expenditures that go out in that capital account. There are some, there are some general fund, there has always been some general fund monies that go into the account. But for projects, they use self-sufficient, improving, improving the airport, terminal, taxiways, fuel, new fuel system, those things have always, have been paid for. Security, security system above the...
Any more discussion, questions? Moving to a top resolution. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer, to accept the Arrow Contract Twenty Twenty Three, Resolution Number Five Fourteen. Can I have our call, City Clerk?
Councilwoman Sher.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Stucho.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Bear Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Horsey.
Yes.
Felonino.
Yes.
And Pratt.
Yes.
Bates, you're approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move into Item B, it's just an amendment to a TCO, Dave.
Yes, so this is on Charles Street in Hallett, the intersection there. And the chief, it came to the chief's attention that there was some confusing sign in the north and south directions of it. The northbound main of Charles, at a yield, were crossing Hallett. And the southbound, you had a stop sign. He went back and did his research and found that there was no rhyme or reason for it, for that difference, and was proposing that they be made uniformed, so there would be stop signs on both the north and southbound sign. So that's what this TCO is set to do, is amend that nineteen eighty-one TCO to make those stop signs, so it goes through Hallett Street.
Yep, any questions?
I wasn't on council then, oh. I wasn't on council then, so I can't be blamed for that one, but it makes sense, especially when we just did one over here of Manning Street and River?
River.
Yeah, because they had yield signs there, and that was always an accident waiting to happen. So that's a good move.
You weren't on council in nineteen eighty-one, Bruce, and you think that's an excuse? How long have you been on council?
Damn long.
So you know that saying I wasn't on council at that time is not an excuse. Did you have something to add, Councilman Palladino?
Yeah, thanks to the police chief for getting that done, we requested that for the last meeting. I don't see him here, but I would like an update on Northwest and Fire. I had someone else come up to me the other day and say, has the council thought about a stop sign there? His, his wife got into an accident.
I know, I know the chief's looking into that, because I had discussions with him about it as well.
Great, thanks.
You're right, that's a spot, it is, it's a confusing spot. I don't know why, it's not confusing to me, but let your mom learn, so. Any more questions before we hopefully approve this traffic controller?
So who's?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharpe, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, new business, Item C.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So this is just another resolution, it's something we have to have in place before applying for a particular grant, the TEDF B Grant for twenty twenty-four. So this resolution is actually for three points, two lines. So this one is for three point seven nine miles of microsurfacing slash chip seal. So this would be for twenty twenty-four, if we received the grant. They put it out in packets, so you apply for twenty-four and twenty-five. So we put two projects together to get some additional chip seal done to bring out some of our, our streets up, up to a better condition. So that's what this first one is, so this would be a resolution for that. We do not have all the streets identified yet, but we do know that it's the cost and the rate.
Kind of had grants, but variants on here, so. Any questions?
I just, I just have one question, you can ship two, we can ship three.
There's a process, the two actually, it's a double, double chip seal with some emulsion in there. They say that they've gotten into work, so we've been studying that EPS and we have to engineer.
Because we're ships are letting you use.
If we could get ten years on something versus grading and spraying it, or even five, we could potentially be to the good, so that's it.
Worth a try, it really is, how much worse could it get, you know? Any more questions? Have a motion?
So who?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharpe, seconded by Councilman Soha, for the twenty twenty-four funds. This is a resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right.
The second project, Mayor, is Monroe Street, between Hillsdale Street and West Street. There's a number of businesses in that area, including BPU. Now, bricks, you know, that is an old brick street. There's lead service lines, no curb, the gutter's bad, go nine yards. So for twenty-five, they are going to submit for a grant application for that for two hundred and fifty thousand, and they do have matching funds for that particular road street section. Again, there's no guarantee we'll get either of them, but we have to have the resolutions in place.
Very good. Any questions? Councilman Palladino.
So you're talking about ripping up the brick in front of the OPC and the BPU there? Oh, that was stated. Love it.
It's pretty bad.
Is our last brick road, though, we...
I wouldn't say it's gonna stay.
Well, we would plan on saving the bricks and actually allowing people to probably purchase some of their very small amount. I think they did that with the last time, I know they have, they do have some still left out of DPS. They sold people wonderful patios and various things, so.
Cool. Any more questions?
It is sad to see it go, it's necessary, that whole street is...
You gotta go to BPU and pay your bills, and it's just like an adventure camp there, so, yeah.
Move to the...
Support, second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharpe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. No, uh, proclamations, no appointments, there's one miscellaneous report on there, it's the assesse department's report for the twenty twenty-three BPU utility lanes. I don't know if anybody has any questions about this, but it's in the packet. It's not all that interesting. All right, so we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open, please leave your comments in three minutes. Please leave your trips to wander the podium, and you may speak on anything your heart so desires.
Joseph Pendy, one eighty-one Race Street, here in the area of Council. It has come, come apparent from reading the city's charter that Jeremiah G.G. Hotchager, an appointee to the Board of Public Works, does not reside in the city of Hillsdale, which has him disqualified for service on set board of BPU. Section thirteen point four of the city's charter entitled Membership of the Board of Public Works states, in pertinent part, each person appointed as a member of the Board of Public Works shall possess the qualifications required by this charter for elective officers of the city. Section five point one of the city charter entitled Qualifications states, no person shall be eligible to any elective office of the city unless he/she be qualified elector in the city and shall have been a resident of the city for at least three years prior to the date of the election at which he/she is a candidate for office. I would appreciate if you would investigate Mr. Hotchager's home address on fifteen twenty Lampier Street, Hillsdale, Michigan, four nine two four two, Hillsdale Township, I believe, which I know is not in the city limits, and I know he's not a qualified elector of the city of Hillsdale or a resident. Take action to assure the integrity of this body and the operations of BPU Utilities by immediately declaring the position vacant and moving to appoint a new officer of the board. I'd add that this has been a longstanding violation and was addressed to Mr. Stockford and two other councilmen through an email communication in two thousand fourteen, nine years ago. The solution isn't to look the other way regarding the charter. And finally, but to change the charter or obey it. It's our city constitution. We have policy, why, why have policy if you're not gonna follow it? Y'all should have taken the oath of office to hold the constitution when you came into office. Our charter is the city's constitution, and this, all while your city attorney looks the other way. You should be investigating these appointments to make sure they're legal, to keep you people legal. I would also ask that Mr. Thompson has disclosed to the city that he is now the county's general legal counsel. That, that could be a conflict of interest. It appears he has too much on his plate to keep this body legal, that no one on this body cares about the city's constitution. Where the, where's the accountability? It seems as if the college and its affiliates want to sell the constitution and don't really believe in it, or we follow our charter. You make new rules, you tell me I only have five minutes to speak, but yet this body violates the constitution or the charter of our city. I hope that really hits home, councilmen and councilmen and women. Shame on you and shame on our city attorney. I'd also like to address the homeless issue that was talked about, Mr. Palladino and... Mr. Palladino and Mr. Stuccio brought up Community Action Agency. We've got the roundup program rounding up people's dollars on their BPU board that goes to Community Action Agency that isn't doing anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, I can assure you that we, that I did not forget about your correspondence from two thousand and fourteen. Um, there's a state law that over, that makes that charter, um, that, that part of the charter. Uh, even on it, there's lots of things in the charters that's.
Change it!
Okay, I mean, thank you, Joe. But that is correct, isn't it, Tom? That the, the residency requirements on the board of utilities is?
It's not guaranteed, he's not, he's not an elector of the city.
Sir. Is that correct?
I'd have to take a look at that um, statute again because I know it applies to things like police officer. That sort of thing. So adding a residency requirement, whether or not it would apply to the Board of Public Works and the kind of things that were the charter guys. I'll have to look at it.
Well, please do, please look at, look to it because the last time I got an opinion on it was in two thousand and fourteen, and it was from our previous city attorney, so I would be interested to know if you have a different reading of it because sometimes Lou said things that I don't, didn't agree with very much.
I, I doubt I will, from my recollection of it. But I would just be on the same side, because it's been a while since I've looked at it, I don't think.
Thank you, Dave.
And, and Tom, just to, to be clear, um, Mr. Hotchire is a customer of the BPU uh, as well, and there are other members on the board which are customers, um. But not necessarily residents.
We've had a long, it's been a long time that we've had people on the Board of Utilities that were not residents of the city.
Yep.
And, and I believe that statute does provide for that, but again, before I say definitively on the record, I wanna make sure that I go back and look at it.
Okay, please do. Thank you, Tom. Any more public comment?
Missy Gatcher, Hillsdale Community Thrift. Um, I would be happy to help keep track um, and sign off on those volunteer hours if it ever comes to be that. Um, I already do that already with a lot of court ordered volunteer hours through the courts. Um, we plan on continuing uh, to work in the areas of the city cleanup. Um, James Galloway now works for Hillsdale Community Thrift. Um, and so we kind of partner together with our endeavors and our goals. And so, um, when, um, oh, how could I forget his name? Michael Jordan went around and, and asked for some of that money. It funneled through Hillsdale Community Thrift and then right through to the homeless that helped and to James Galloway. And so these are ways that we think that we can help the city and also the people that live in the city, and also the homeless and those that are looking to just also volunteer um, to help our city look better. Um, we plan on doing that with public, private, and commercial. Um, I contacted the owner um, on Howder Street, am I saying that right? The Howder Street address? And he made a donation to my nonprofit, and then I paid um, uh, some of the homeless and James Galloway to go over and clean up that house. And so I contacted the owner and he was willing to do it, so that was one more thing that was cleaned up in our city. Um, we do have an option for a building. Um, I have to sit on it for a minute for, um, to make sure this is something that I truly wanna take on. Um, it is gonna need a lot of little TLC, it's nothing that I'm scared of. I'm a contractor's wife, so it's nothing that I haven't seen much worse with. Um, it is gonna need a whole new roof. Um, it's obviously gonna have to meet some, um. Entire, the, the, to pass uh, for occupancy permit. Currently, right now, it is just residential, so we would have to apply to have it be multifamily. I don't necessarily wanna call it a shelter, but this would be transitional living where we would focus on making sure that they're working with um, Michigan Works. Um, that they would be working on um, focusing on their mental health. Um, their, just their physical health also. Um, so this is something that um, kind of like a little bit of what like Aware in Jackson does, the Aware, the Aware Shelter in Jackson. It focuses on getting people to the next step and then making sure that they have what they need to also continue to go down that path of moving forward. I would wanna send, just like we don't normally send our children out into the world until we kind of feel like we're ready to let go, and we make sure that they have all the resources that they need. Some of these people were never given any of those resources. Um, some of these people were kicked out at the age of sixteen and just owned by their family. Some of these people were dropped off when they were thirteen years old and left in Florida for, for themselves. So some of these people just need a moment, not a handout, but a hand up because there is such a thing as helping can hurt. Um, you can give a man a fish for a day, which you teach him to fish, and he can feed himself for a lifetime. There is something to that. Um, and so with that, we also plan on creating an advocacy program, which we would have volunteers come and they would wanna volunteer their time and um, they could share their phone numbers. This, this could be somebody that, somebody could call to be like, hey, I don't know what this is, can you explain this to me? You know, we still do that as friends, we do that as, with our parents, you know, like, hey mom, what does this mean? Um, some of these people have no one. Like, I can't even tell you how many people I'm listed as as just an emergency contact because they literally have nobody. So with that, we give them the resources, we teach them the way, and then it's up to them to make the correct decisions. Sometimes they were never taught the right decisions. So how can we expect them if we don't even know if they even know what to do? So that's my plan of moving forward, so I hope that I have your support, and I think together we can figure it out as a, as a, as a community, and uh, we can help and we can maybe set precedents to the rest of the nation on how to fix this issue. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
All right, a little bit messy. Uh, earlier I was talking about eviction and things that were happening. Uh, this lady that's at my place uh, earns thirty-one dollars an hour and can't pay the rent. And I've been held up by the court simply because there's no mediation uh, that's being taken place in the beginning or informal. It's all formal now. So it's, it's really kind of a silly thing to seek out and try to say that the court needs to take the, you know, the upper hand when the owners need to. Uh, I did talk to the Community Action Agency, uh, a lady's name was Terry Spratt. Um, I think it's her name is. Um, she uh, has addressed it in, in, in several ways for me, and I didn't understand a lot of it. Uh, my place, I have approximately five rentals, but there's only three that can be rented. And because I've been losing on this other one, I've been losing another renter. So I can't entertain the Community Action Agency, and I can't entertain some of these other folks as well, simply because the court can't push this forward. Uh, it's gonna be hard for a lot of others, I think, if we're gonna have to qualify to be able to evict somebody. Qualification. You know, I gotta qualify with Community Action Agency to put somebody inside that apartment. And you know, the rejection laws is when they came in, I ended up with a lady who was more or less a drunk and burnt, you know, holes in the carpet. Now I then have to take care of that, and I have to take care of the walls and repaint it. So there's no accountability on that end. I'm having to see if I want Community Action Agency there, and I understand some of the other things that they've just now got. I'm hoping maybe they'll intervene, maybe come along, and I think if you look at the even possibility of Lifeways. Um, Lifeways is holding about a hundred million dollars. Why can't we tap into some of that money? Why can't we find a, you know, an outlet there? It's nonprofit, we can find nonprofit agencies that we can, you know, get some of that. Maybe we can get, I think it's Mary Beth, she's a part of, um, or head CPO or whatever you call it. Maybe she's got some good ideas, you know, if we draw it forward. But homeless, yeah, we've had out there Jeffries, as I mentioned, down on Millens Road, Brown Road. Uh, people just kind of camping in these vans now, and then there's a tent. I don't know the name of it, but it's a sizable little tent, a little awning, and they've been there. And there's a, uh, a lady with her child, and I thought it was sickening. And the only way she can do it is come by and pass out food. Downtown Detroit, before I got ill, we would go downtown. And underneath the viadocks, those were living underneath there. We would drive by in trucks with loads of food on them and hop, you know, drop them off. Though lighters, they needed light, I mean, something. Anyway, we dropped off gloves, we bought them here at the Fairgrounds, took packages of those up there for the winter time. But here, why can't we take care of our own heater? Why can't we see somebody and take care of them? I see Dennis Wayne Scott many times over, his name's mentioned in many different places. Doing good for others, and we really need to focus, can we do better? We've got all kinds of commissioners that have good knowledge, I think there's one back here? Yes. There might be open doors that he could, you know, bring in. So anyway, uh, thank you for listening, have a good evening.
Thanks, Bob.
Alicia Taylor, Ward Four. Um, I, obviously the ordinance went through. Um, my concern is, I read it, I have not seen the amended ordinance. Um, but I know the original one I saw wasn't just about camping. I know we keep saying, but it's a camping ordinance, it's not about homeless. But there was parts in there that I saw that said sitting in public. So if you're sitting in public and you're suspected of homeless, that that's a violation, that's not camping. So, I mean, unless I'm reading them around, that's what the first version I saw came out that said. Um, I also would like to address homelessness is not just about bad decisions or bad choices. Um, I myself have been homeless, and it wasn't because of choices I was made, it was because of the environment that I was in. And it was either leave and have no place to go, or stay and die. That wasn't, where was my choice? And luckily I have friends that helped me through that. But if not, I would have been staying under that bridge in Stocks Park. So it, it's not a choice. I, people fall on hard times, I know people who have gotten ill. Their children have become ill, and they have to sell their house just to pay for cancer treatment, and now they're homeless. So, yes, I guess those are choices, save your child or live on the street. But it's not because you're making bad choices all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Any swan Ward Four? Um, Mr. Hadley's comments about Mr. Hotchire. Um, Craig Connor was on the BPU board for a long time. He was president of County National Bank, they were a customer. I, there are other people on the um, BPU that don't live in the city. I, this kind of seems like a targeted comment to me. Um, I forgot what I was gonna, the other thing I was gonna say. I'm sad to see the ordinance passed because as Alicia said, if you read through it, if you're sitting on a bench too long, or if you're laying down, like if I were to go to Sandy Beach, spend the day, and I take a nap, I could potentially be targeted because I'm there sleeping. Um, I, it's not just a camping ordinance from what I read through it. So unfortunately it's passed. Um, thank you, can't remember the other one.
Ready? Any more public comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Steve.
Do you have the authority to um, take people off the homeless commission if they don't show up to meetings? Do you plan on doing that?
Steve, I know you don't call up here very often, but uh, public comment is not an answer, a matter of course.
Sorry, okay, I encourage you, I encourage you, if you can do that, to do that. The other thing is, I'd like to go on record, uh, as, as I've said before, I've helped with the warming center for five years. Uh, I stand ready to be on that commission if, uh, you know, if somebody thinks it's a good idea, um, I'm available. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Any more public comment?
The first thing I wanted to say, which I wasn't allowed to. I would like some of that assistive listening availability, I don't know what it is. So I like council members have a real soft feminine voice, it's hard to hear what they say. So that was my first question. And I know you can't answer me, but it would be nice if somebody could put something out there someplace so people that can't hear real good could do that. Uh, I mentioned this, the Public Safety Committee. Uh, not totally the way I'm saying it now, but if the police cars were parked down here and the handicap parking was up there, the handicap, like Steve, wouldn't have to travel half the city block up that way to come back down this way so you get into City Hall, which I think would be great. I know it's not the same as a yield sign and a stop sign, but it would help. The other thing is, the neighbor, Mr. Sharps, which is a friend of mine, has um, got kidney failure, he's in a cart now. He runs around town, couldn't get in downstairs, and then some gentleman opened the door when he finally did get in to let him get out. And I know I brought this up, is this building really handicap accessible? Cuz those doors, I mean, I don't see how anybody in a wheelchair, and I don't know how Steve got in, can actually get in or out of those doors by themselves. I just, I don't see that. When you look at some of the crosswalks, like even to get here, there's no easy way to get to City Hall if you're parked, say, up by Gelsers or something without going up to McPaulum Street, coming around, there's no crosswalks out here. It's just not easy, you gotta get over on the other side of the street, come down to the uh, post office, and then cut across. There's no other way to get here. Um, I think some of this stuff needs to be addressed. I think no camping is a great thing on public property, but I know the ordinance carries a few little back steps there about the beach, if you're sitting near your car for so long, or if you're on the beach, if you're taking a nap, all that stuff is in that ordinance. If the police are gonna enforce that ordinance, then doesn't matter who it is. If they're doing that, then they need to be ticketed, they shouldn't just be lower class people or whatever, whatever you wanna call it. But, uh, I wish there was more minutes out for one thing, it's the Safety Committee. Uh, they had a meeting, no agenda the other night, stuff like this, and it's not just them, there's other committees too that, there's just no agendas out there, you don't know what's going on. Um, you don't know what they're gonna talk about or to be prepared even come to listen to the meetings, or even if you wanna come to listen to it. So, uh, I do hope someone can get back to me on the assistive listening. I guess I hear some feminine voices that are hard to hear.
Thanks, Jack. Any more public comment?
And reference to the homeless can be much, just dissolve the one we have, just the air started with, rather than try to sort out, I don't know, how many people, start with twenty, and just set up a number of people you want on the table. Be much easier that way than wait and see if they show up, not show up. Uh, I was just wondering, on the airport, do we ever have a, a net profit loss statement? You talk about, mine sold twenty thousand gallons of jet fuel at five bucks a gallon, but what's our actual net profit on that twenty thousand gallons, or whatever it was? Because, you know, we are supporting the airport definitely, I just like to know what's usually profit loss, just like any other business. How much is it really costing us to have the airport open? Other ways we can improve the revenue for your airport other than just through fuel. Um, I was just wondering, I know the wild bag, Mr. Sharp and Mr. Soha. So we should, we're not gonna spend one dollar on the homeless. I just wonder, with the city attorney, he shows up at these uh, city citation hearings. Is he, are we gonna be developed separately, or is that just part of yourself, part of the agreement? So if it's going to be, get built, it's gonna cost the city. Along with non, including the cost of the police department personnel to enforce the city ordinance. And say, well, this is a camping ordinance, and that. this is a camping ordinance and that is not against homeless. I mean, how many families have been pointing out, families who have homes or are camping over in Cold Springs or somewhere else? That's just saying we have an ordinance about horses, uh, cracking on the streets, but it's not against ponies. A pony's a horse. This ordinance is in just plain view, it's against the homeless, period. Not against Joel Low with his family who went to camp over at the homeless park, cause that's just call it what it is and forget the nonsense. Now to answer that lady here with the question you might, uh, like, the purpose of having them out of sight is cause of sensibility of so many people, oh, there's homeless people, we don't want to see them, is not to put them in one spot and not provide services, to give them a spot where they can function while services are being provided to them. And that was the purpose of it. And, you know, you start quoting, uh, well, the Old Testament, you know, if you don't work, you don't eat, well, we can quote a lot of the Old Testament, um, and people get stoned for adultery, how many up here wouldn't be around here today if that was the case? I work out of the New Testament, ma'am, and I also work out of the New Testament about sheep's and goats. And when you go home today, you have to adore God almighty. Do I function as a sheep or as a goat? Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Any more public comment? Steve, now we will close the podium and move into the City Manager's Report. Dana.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things to report on. Um, our air chilling unit that takes care of City Hall is supposed to be on a, on a truck being delivered this week. Uh, it was ordered back in September, um, and I think we were delayed four or five times in the production process, but we're told that it's shipping this week, so hopefully at, uh, at our next meeting, we actually have, um, air within the whole, uh, City Hall. Second item, uh, something we ordered about six, eight weeks ago, um, and we talked about quite extensively, uh, were the two pickup trucks, one for the BPU water and sewer, one for DPS. Um, the discussion was, you know, the local dealerships, we had the opportunity to get some that weren't from the local dealership that were on the lot. Um, we chose to give a, a local dealer, Hillsdale GMC, the opportunity to produce and deliver, um, because they were actually the lowest bidder. They were just gun shy about being able to get them. Just wanted to report that they were able to get both trucks, actually a week early and, uh, we're, the guys are very happy and, uh, so we're very pleased with Hillsdale GMC and Ken, they're stepping up and, you know, delivering for us on that. Um, also wanna report that Sandy Beach is now open, uh, as far as for the summer through the fall, that is for season pass, uh, it's a fifty dollars for season pass and then five dollars a day for a daily pass for, uh, per vehicle. So that is up and running. Baseball and softball, we have fifteen teams competing, so we've got quite a bit of games going on at Field of Dreams. Um, and that is moving along well. Um, there was some concern over the, the water, um, drinking fountain out there at Field of Dreams and a lot of that was tied up with Health Department getting the proper test that turned on, um, once we met that, the requirements, it was immediately turned on, which was last week. Um, the Power Secure Project, which is our backup power generator, says BPU and council has been supportive of, uh, from, for the BPU and MSCPA, that project is on track. Um, the tentative timeline for those units to be up and tested will be June of twenty-fourth. So we're going through the engineering now, um, getting all that set up, the units are being produced, so it's looking like we'll meet those timelines. Um, and again, we'll have a unit out by DPS to handle the, the southeast portion of the community and then one in the industrial park. And then what the BPU was working on is adding switches, um, at the, at the industrial park where we'll have more flexibility, power out, which was being able to hit them on quicker. So that network is our own process and moving along. Um, the, uh, terminal, airport terminal is, was actually put out to bid on Friday, so that is out on the street. Um, and then I believe they have to the end of the month, um, to bid, um, and it's very tight timeline with the FAA, they have to have it by the end of the first week of July and they will, yes, and then they will, um, they actually gave us a week extension, cause it was supposed to be June thirtieth and, uh, then it will, um, it will come into funding by the end of July, I believe. So it could actually be under construction later this fall.
Good deal, Dave.
That is all I get from you.
Thank you, any questions for Dave? Call some chart.
Just nice to have City Manager Report. Been a while.
Yeah, it's been a couple meetings. Any more questions, comments?
No comments.
Yes, sir.
First I wanna thank Bruce for, uh, dogging me back away with my son system in council now and everybody here and as a senior citizen myself, sometimes your hearing fails and what you need to do is compensate that with a hearing aid. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stute. Any more public, any more council questions for Dave? Questions for Dave? All right, council comment? Council comment? Councilman Soha?
Just wanted to comment on the ordinance in the city. If you, I just read the ordinance, um, and the city isn't the exception, so, and April, it's in this week's packet, which is on the city's website, if you find the link to council and agendas, it'll be there and you can read through the ordinance. Thank you.
It's really easy to understand, it's only a couple pages, but I do think a lot of people are reading those exceptions as part of the ordinance, so, yes. The exceptions as part of the forbidden things in the old, I think there's a lot of that.
Thank you, Mayor, that's what I was trying to.
Yes, sir, that's what I thought. Any more council comment? Councilman.
Does wildlife drive receive BPU services?
Wildlife drive receives.
North of Hillsdale, you take a left up the, uh?
Yes, they, but they don't have sewage.
Correct.
But they, they're on BPU, but they don't have, all right, city ser, city sewage, yes.
They don't have water.
No, they don't have city water.
They're fire consumers.
Yes, so yes, electric.
Okay, yeah, I heard some concerns about that, that residents were saying there was a plan potentially decades ago, I don't know when this happened, to get the full services. Is that totally off the books? And they were starting saying they feel like they're getting a raw deal with the whole thing.
They are getting a raw deal and, uh, we've tried to address it for a long time, but...
I think it was that they, they were going, they were brought into the city under the pretense that they were going to get full city services and after, um, they got, they had electric, but the water and sewer, getting it there and the issues was dead until after they could add to that, so, that was longer for me.
Yes.
Bruce was on it.
No.
Before all of us and I, if I remember correctly, it wasn't so much the city as the developer that kind of screwed wildlife drive out there that made promises to them that certain things were gonna happen and then it.
All of them free those.
Yes.
Do we, I mean, do we need to let them go on that basis? Do they still?
They are, well, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but we take a hit on the tax charge.
Oh, they're amazing homes, that's, yeah, it's, it's a great area, but they're not getting what they originally bargained for. Uh, the other thing on, on, uh, Joe Hendy's comment, so the state law reference and municipally owned utilities is Michigan Constitution nineteen sixty-three, uh, chapter seven, sections twenty-four and twenty-five, which basically just authorizes it, but then the law governing the utilities is fourth plus City Act one oh eight point one. There may be created in constitution every city, subject to the provisions of this act, a board of public works composed of five members, who shall be free holders and electors of the city and shall serve without compensation. It's a good lookin' sound.
Yeah, I don't think that's the state law that we're talking about. It's... First of all, I'm pretty sure the border voting peoples are, that are on border voting peoples are compensating, you know, border voting peoples, I think they get paid.
Okay, well, we, it would be, yeah, lots of instances like this where the charter no longer matches what's in state law, what's in constitution, I've been going through it pretty systematically, but if we could just introduce an amendment, get that language correct in the charter and slowly move through those things, that'd be a great.
I don't know if we can change it, yeah, we'd have to, to change the language of the charter, we'd have to do it through a ballot.
It's an ordinance, I believe.
Is it an ordinance?
It's in the, it's in the charter.
It's in the charter, yeah.
And it would require a charter.
Okay.
The language is in the charter and the statute is the residency of public employees act, which is a, uh, sixteen forty-two, right?
Okay, and that's what, that's what it is, Josh, is that those people started getting some sort of payment or stipend to be on that board and so we can no longer use a residency requirement.
What was that?
And that was.
There is an exception, uh, that the residency requirements do not apply. There are exceptions for certain appointed officials and those are unpaid appointed, uh, officials. It's my understanding to be, uh, and so because of that, they are likely under the condition of violation of the, uh, the act which says you can't acquire, it places limitations on which you can require in terms of residences.
We'd have to stop paying them essentially to, um, I think what happened was once upon a time, way before any of our time, they started paying those people money so they could justify appointing people who were not residents of the city, but who were stakeholders of the city, who had businesses that were large, um, large users of electricity or water. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when it happened, but, and I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, but once upon a time, I think they wanted somebody on that board that wasn't in the city for, for commercial reasons.
Right.
And so they started giving them a payment.
So, or, uh, Councilman Calidino, like, you have to be careful with those state law references in the charter, right, ordinances, cause those are just in there at the time that it's compiled by the, uh, code compiler, which has nothing to do with, you can't rely on those as accurate state and simple laws or, like, they have no meaning whatsoever other than they might appoint some place to live or where this language came from.
Right, yeah, no, I'm not believing anyone here.
And if they don't, if they don't keep up with those, um, and remember the actual codification of the ordinance is a recodification, only occurs every so many years, oftentimes decades, so those references generally only get updated with that.
Yeah, it all makes sense, I, just to, to keep the clarity so we don't have issues like this, right? I mean, I'm, I'm fine putting it on the belt, just say, or correcting this to make it in line with applicable state law.
We can do that stuff like that, sure.
Ju- just to make it clear, that actual residency public employees act has a provision that says you don't need to change any ordinances or charter provisions for this to apply. So they actually tried to, the legislature at the time that passed that, tried to relieve municipalities of the burden and the costs associated with having an election, um, on a charter movement, because not only do you have to have an election, there's a whole process we have to go through in the city attorney's office and getting the, not only the ballot language approved by the Attorney General's office, we also have to get the language of the proposal itself approved by the Municipal Affairs Division of the Attorney General's office. So there's a whole big rig roll, it's expensive, that we have to go through and change it. So if you got a statute that says you don't have to do that, uh, generally I would suggest you not do that just because of the expense.
Any more council comment? I'm gonna tell you guys, I'm down to a couple candidates for the fifth library board seat looking at. And I'm gonna tell you guys, there's not a perfect candidate, okay? There just isn't. There isn't somebody that I'm gonna bring forward that everybody's gonna be like, I, well, I like this person a lot. So some people are gonna be upset, no matter who I point, uh, or whoever council approves, but I'm down to a couple, with there's so many applications, I'm down to a couple that I feel are good candidates for various reasons, but not everybody's gonna be happy always about it, so, yes, sir.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment for Mr. Calidino in regards to the wildlife sanctuary. Um, they do get brush collection, leaf collection, we have chip seal the road, we do do, uh, snow removal, so they get everything but a lot of the silver asset.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Any more council comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to form a council chart, seconded by Councilman Stute to adjourn, all in favor? Any opposed? The ICA has this meeting adjourned.
Are you, Josh?
How you doing?
Ewan.